February 2nd, 2016, Budget Work Session of the North Kingstown School Committee is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Healy, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ambenzato?
Here.
Mr. Blasberg?
Here.
Mrs. Clarkin?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. McGoffin?
Here.
Mrs. Held.
Okay. Mrs. Healy, can you please recite the calendar?
Um, there is no calendar on this evening's agenda.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay. Do we have anyone that wants to make a citizen's comment? Please, can you just state your name and address?
My name is James McCormack. My address is 14 Mayflower Court, North Kingstown. And I just want to keep my comments very short. I was asked to come and say a couple of things on behalf of North Hockey tonight, okay? Good evening to the committee, first of all. First, we'd like to say that we were very, very, very pleased that we could communicate back and forth with the committee and that the committee did fund North Hockey this year, and we were very, very pleased about that. We wanted to say thank you. Very pleased with the athletic budget overall. And we certainly would like to say that we would love to see the athletic budget for North Kingstown High School along with the funding for hockey continuing in the future. And we would also look forward to helping as a kind of a, well, less than a voting block, but more of a word-of-mouth instrument for you on certain other worthwhile instruments as we did, and we tried to do with the Full Day Kindergarten Initiative, which we thought was also very worthwhile, and we're glad to see that that went through.
Thank you.
Just as a question, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask those at this point, but at some point, I'm sure you'll get to it during the meeting or at some point, and I'll stay to find out what's going on, but do you anticipate with the budget going forward in the future with the North Kingstown High School, do you think that budget will, we would like to see it, you know, do you, how do you see that going in the future? And do you think that funding would be able to remain in place for the hockey team?
We normally don't comment, but I will answer that. I think it's premature for any of us to figure out what we may have to cut. It all depends on what the town gives us for a percentage of what we're requesting.
I certainly understand that, but...
For right now, the committee basically has my proposal to them, and there's a lot of work to do from there, but my proposal does not include a cut to any sports programs.
And that's what I said. Thank you very much. I can report back.
And you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Absolutely.
Are there any others that have citizen's comments? So, we have the FY17 Superintendent's preliminary budget, and I think I'm going to open the discussion to any committee members who would like to make some comments.
I know Mr. Jones passed around a spreadsheet that I'm sure, I assume that he's arriving...
Correct, but he's not here, so...
He's not here yet. So, and I think the format of this meeting is going to be pretty informal as far as back and forth and talking.
I agree.
So, I had done a spreadsheet of my own similar to Bob's that I want to go through with some questions and make the thoughts up to me.
Do you have a copy of that for us? Do you got it?
Of mine? What I took was Mrs. King's spreadsheet that she was sharing with us, which was stunningly helpful, and I just added a couple there ago.
Oh, here we go.
I added some columns, and I wasn't able to meet with you beforehand, so I know I'm going to have a lot of questions that are more sort of a...
Greg, if you want to email it to me, I can print something for everyone.
Oh, it's that whole, it's every budget object, so it's not really printable. It's really only workable electronic form. What I basically did was I just sort of took yours and added some columns for my own benefit similar to what Mr. Jones had done, just showing, you know, the deltas over the different years, looking at comparison of the 2016, 2017 changes, because things jump out at you now. The reason I want to talk to Mrs. King without putting you on the spot is that there are always giant changes that I know are not really budget increases. I mean, for example, with one line item that I see like a $630,000 change, I don't think it's actually a $630,000 plus.
Is it subs or one of those?
It's something moving from somewhere, I'm sure, and I know you, I knew you'd have an explanation for it, so I know it's not a true add, but it, it's just useful to go through as Mr. Jones had done with, you know, just sort of the comparisons, because it allows you to see, you know, both the increases and decreases over time, and that's really where, you know, the changes are. So, I kind of need to look a little before I talk more.
Well, Greg's looking. Linda, did you have a comment?
Well, it's really basically around some of the information that Bob sent out earlier regarding the charter school numbers and how they might change depending on the success of being able to hold, having RYAS hold a number down, I guess, to a lower amount of students, because they're trying to push that up to 260 right now, I guess, there's the number 25, and so the upcoming lottery is going to be very important as Bob... Yeah, I know that our stuff is... I don't know if you have information on that. Yeah, you have done a lot of number collection, so...
The record, and I think when we present this going forward, you know, the items I put in green, I think are striking to comment on, like, I know our salary line obviously is very dependent on ongoing collective bargaining, and that puts us in a tough agreement, because obviously we can't use the budgeting process to necessarily influence that either way, so superintendent has to make an assumption, and that's obviously our biggest line in terms of the dollar amount and the variance, but I think it's worth pointing out, for example, the health and medical, you know, over the last five years is down 17%. If that had even just stayed flat from FY13, we'd be talking about having to find another million dollars, and that's hung just the other stuff, so we'd probably have to be finding a lot of cuts just to maintain, and that's with essentially a flat FTE from those two years. In fact, I probably think there's a slight decrease in FTEs from FY13. Obviously, I know there's a lot of talk about pension reform and some of the things, but especially on the MIR side, you see that in the five years, that's a 44% change, so, you know, even though supposedly there's been pension reform, that's a driver that's, you know, over $100,000 this year and has obviously been outpacing our only 2.65-year average for salary increases. As was pointed out, you know, our charter school line is up 90% in five years, and that's a combination of different things, but again, that's another tough, anywhere from $80,000 to whatever it will be, and we won't fully know those numbers until March, April, so again, another tough, tough thing to budget against. The, a couple of the other lines I wanted to point out, like, that was on the larger thing, for example, tuition to private sources, so that's down from last year in the budget almost 20%, which I hope Phil, you would attribute to our Davisville Academy Initiative and other things, so it's good to see that that's returning savings back to the district. Our sub-line is down in five years, 12%. Our workers' comp, which I know...
People out there watching this cannot hear anybody. We have to speak closer to the mics. I don't know if there's anything we can do with the audio, the little pinging that's going on.
Mr. Jones?
Okay. So, I won't belabor some of the other things, but, you know, our phone down 25%, our electricity down 3%, so I think you can look at a lot of these things and, you know, give congratulations to the administration and some of the work they've done to contain some of those costs over the years. If we look at some of the short-term issues, if I can address, I'll just sort of go down my list here, and then again, I apologize since I just provided this to the administration today, so they may not have full detail on all this stuff. Just some of the items with rather percentage-wise, large variance that are higher dollar amount, and I'll just start with the medical buyback. I don't know if we know why that's...
Well, I think the correlation would be where you're seeing the health coverage come down, some of that is going into buyback. So, in other words, if, you know, some of them, people are opting out of the coverage, they're getting the buyback. So, that would be a change in that regard.
And it seems we have, you know, a significant increase in the conference workshops. I don't know if that's a specific, like, I know a couple of years ago, we had the Niaske accreditation, that was at one time, you know, $30,000 expense, but I don't know if that's, you know...
Does anyone speak to that?
And again, some of these may just be items to throw out or to work over the next, you know, week or so, just sort of going down kind of the list, but I mean, we have a $46,000 increase in this year's budget, so I don't know if there's something particular that was driving that or not.
We do have some PD work that we're doing with our technology initiative, so that's driving some of that. We also have some work that we're doing around now, now that we have the release of the POP tests, we have that going on. We have the new science kits that are requiring us to have people out for PD, to learn how to use the science kits and implement that curriculum. So, those are the main drivers behind that.
Just have a point on that one.
So, those are not travel. Those are workshops that are happening in the schools, for the most part.
For the most part.
So, do you remember what the workshop line item used to be, like, long time ago now? Do you remember the school committee used to go away every year and take and fly in an airplane to California? School party?
That was before my time.
I was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jeez. Can we reinstitute that?
You'd like to re-cooperate that?
No, that's not...
Well, I would like to point out that we are sending people to California, but it is grant-funded.
Well, okay, that's good.
So, kudos to the administration for...
It's hard to say, Linda, because a lot, over the years, what is now called conference workshops, might have been called professional development in another year, and, you know, my sense of things is that money for professional development, I remember clearly in some of the years, was something that was cut back significantly when I was first, yeah.
Huge, yeah. And that was a lot of travel, and that's not what this line item was...
So, there are, there are different items that we definitely need. You know, we get a lot of very good bang-for-all buck from particularly our science program, but it is pretty intensive with professional development. That's part of the whole point, and it really helps us to get better. Right now, as Dr. Humbert said, with the technology initiative, that is a big step for us. It's something that's going to require us to, you know, beef up the professional development to make sure we're prepared, so...
In addition to the medical, I'd point out, again, our dental is down 20% too, so again, lots of, lots of work between the administration and our employees to come together to really contain an item that for a lot of other places is blowing up their budgets. I don't know, Phil, if you got, on the professional services, I didn't know if that was, for example, we talked about the service we put out for Barbara Jackson and that kind of stuff, if that's where that is, but it seemed like there was an increase, so I don't, a big increase, so I don't know if that's, again, the shifting around of expenses from one to another, or, but if you could just talk to what we're kind of doing with that functionality this year.
Not sure what's contained in that line. I'm going to defer to Mrs. King here.
Yeah, why don't you talk, I'll look for that, but if you could speak more about Mrs. Jackson.
Yeah, if you can just talk that functionality in that role.
Yeah, with Mrs. Jackson, her role, as you know, had been roughly at the expense of about $40,000 to help with business partnerships for our career and tech program as it started. We transferred most of that money, about $25,000, to an internal group of teachers who oversee curriculum and all of the logistics, almost acting like department heads and internship coordinators for the program. And Mrs. Jackson's role for this year is capped at about $15,000 to help us with the Board of Directors and helping us with some more business partnership work. I'm not even sure that in this particular year, that that's going to come up to a complete $15,000, but that's, there's been no added expense on that. That's all the same existing money that we've used for the last two years.
Quick point that I would just add, and...
No, I'm not even sure the professional services is that, so...
Under professional services, just to make a quick point, for what I'm seeing here, it looks like last year, not last year, but the last column, percentage change from 2013 to 16 is negative 60%. Then you see an increase, but just keep in mind that we had had a sharp decrease that the previous year. I mean, yeah, that, that means that there was a substantial change there, but that means any expenditure of money is going to be a larger increase.
And actually, that line item is not where Ms. Jackson's monies are budgeted. That other professional services has a lot to do with facilities services, so, and I can, I'll get you the details of all those, but there's service contracts, there's also some budgeting for, we know we're going to have air quality testing, we always have several of those during the year, they're not, that's not cheap, possibly some consulting. We know we always have some sort of consulting for some issue that we have in the facility, so I can get you some more detail on that also.
The next line, the stipends for athletic and co-curricular, is that budgeting based on, because it might be tied to the collective bargaining agreement, and we're just putting in an estimate for that, or is that just a, because it just seems like a lar, I mean, it's small in the relative scheme, but I mean, just, I don't think we're adding a lot of new functionality there, capability, so...
I can get back to you on more details on that too, but I believe some of it would be also what has transpired, any changes that we've made in this year, okay? So, we would have had, the hockey, the hockey should be there, you know, the hockey coaches, those stipends, but I'll get you the details on that also.
Is the summer pay line, the 51338, is that for the various summer school and other activities?
Yeah, any of the ESY stuff that we have, and any of those increases would reflect what we're budgeting for estimated salary increases in those lines. That's more in line with that.
Okay.
But the class coverage right below that, what is...
That's kind of a, it's a difficult line to budget for, but I think that, you know, you've heard Dr. O'Jay and I talking about how difficult it is to get staffing. We have had an increase in the class coverage, and basically what that is, is that if we cannot get a sub for a class, then a teacher gets paid to take over that class during their free period, and we have had a very difficult time getting subs. Certain times of year are worse than others, but you're going to see that line fluctuate because of that.
200-plus percent is a lot.
It is, but in dollar-wise, it's not as dramatic as that, but it is, and that's really, I budgeted it based on where we see, we're seeing it going with this year and next year. I mean, we are having an incredible difficulty in this district getting staffing for any positions from what you want to call for the lower levels right up. We cannot find people, the applications and resumes we are not getting when we advertise positions, and we're not retaining people. It's a very big issue that the school committee is going to have to address at some point.
Do you know if any other districts are having the same issues?
There are pockets of it, pockets of certain types of employee, you know, for example, you, your bus drivers, there's, we discussed a shortage in bus drivers. Some districts have a harder time than others with the subs for teaching or TAs or whatnot, so...
That's a common one, I think, more so.
But it is.
Some districts, and also tutors, even though that's not...
Oh, yeah, that's, that is...
That's another thing that's really, really tough.
Yeah. And then I think if you also like, the type of TA, for example, you know, we're having more difficult getting, more difficulty getting the qualified TAs for the clinical day program. So, it all depends on the qualifications that you're looking for. We know for teaching, we have a hard time finding math and science teachers, so we know that kind of thing. So, clearly, if you're having a hard time finding them as employees, you're going to have an even harder time finding them as subs.
Mary, do you know on the auditing services, is that because we're anticipating a new change in the contract with them, or...
Yeah, well, that has to go back out to bid, so I'm not...
Okay, I didn't know if the one was expiring and...
Yeah, well, for FY15, that was only a one-year extension of LGCND's three-year contract with no RFP, and they decided that, the town decided that, because they were so entrenched in the town numbers and it took so long to get FY14 done, that they felt it was the best thing to do and just extend LGCND for that one year without going out to bid. I'm assuming they will be going out to bid for FY16, since there's plenty of time to do that. I am anticipating an increase on that, because we did have an increase in FY15. FY15, that number was of much higher than what we had paid in the past.
Can we just back up to one line item here that Bob had highlighted? The rubbish disposal had a 41% increase. I assume, is that because of, we had a Davisville Academy?
Partially, yeah. And then also, you know, we had been, in this year, in FY16, we had, I'm sorry, in FY, can this not on here? In FY16, we had a change in the contract, I believe. I will check that, because now that I'm saying it, I'm not entirely sure. I don't remember.
So, we'll get down to the really small stuff. I'm just curious, Phil, on the professional organizations and the non-professional ones, that does not include RYAS for the school committee, is that correct?
Does not.
So, I mean, we've increased it $8,000, but we're still not including RYAS, so I don't know if there's been some huge other jump in some of those other professional things.
What is the object number on that, Bob?
58101.
And 102. I mean, it's not, it's a small amount, it's not, I just wanted to point it out.
Yeah, it's the usual suspects that we've had, you know, we have NASDAQ, RYASP with a P, RISTI, which is IT, RIASBO, small amount of money, RISA, a couple of athletic things.
Right, and I, I mean, I don't, I support, you know, our professionals having those, and some are required to, for example, I mean, to be in the athletic league, we have to be in RYASP, so it just seemed like a big jump if we're not including RYASP. I guess I would then go back and just ask on the supplies, the 56101. I know it's an area, in the past, we sort of underfunded and, you know, it seems like we still just sort of level-funded it going forward with some enrollment changes. I just want to, so, if we had gone to a sort of metric for that in terms of so much per pupils or so much per type, or if, if, you know, there was other ways, we sort of were coming up with the number. I know it's a large increase, but I also know it's an area that was a bill payer in the past for a lot of stuff, so I didn't know if we were just sticking with some kind of metric on how we calculated it.
I try to get in about $110 per pupil, but it's not an exact science, because some of your schools might require a few more, they might require additional supplies because they have a heavier special education population, or for example, Fishing Cove has a big pre-K population, and that's a supplies-intensive kind of area. So, it's not an exact science. I try for that not to be the area that's always cut, but it's the area that's always cut, you know, so I think that with the large increase that we had talked about in FY15 budget and this budget, I don't think it's as, clearly, there's, you know, never enough money for everything that you want, but I think that it's better than it has been in the past years.
Right, yeah, I just wondered if it was some, we read it per pupil, and then with some, some obviously variance depending on the type of thing. I know, I mean, it's basically been flat for four years, so, on that...
One of the problems in setting a budget line for something like supplies is that it's not necessarily a specific item, so since people don't completely understand what it is, because it could be 1,000 different things, it seems, well, let's take a few bucks from there to make ends meet, where every one of those 1,000 things could be very important, they're just not as well-defined as saying athletic supplies. You know what that is, so...
Right, yeah, I know it's a roll-up of a lot of different, so it's just on the thing. I mean, obviously, we've got large increases in technology, but I mean, that's, we're moving into the next phase of our technology plan on that. I guess I would just end my part with the committee and just talk about the issue I did, which is, in the superintendent's budget, we've essentially held FTEs flat except a 1.0 increase, which I think used to be a grant-funded position. That's right, Phil?
Yes.
And so, just a sort of general discussion about when we move from grant-funded to general-funded or other things, absorbing that structural increase, and to the extent we want to look at offsetting that as just a general principle, whenever we have those kinds of issues. I asked the superintendent, but just, you know, a couple hours ago, to explain this more in depth, and I know you wouldn't, that's not enough time to...
No, that's okay.
...put the whole issue together.
I am prepared.
Okay.
So, part of the issue with the special ed grant had to do not only with the idea of taking salaries out of the grant and then moving, say, supplies into the grant, which is easier to do, but the fact that the way the grant was structured, we were using surplus funds within the grant, money that we hadn't spent in years before and that carried over, and using that to pay for salaries, and that was a problem. That was a practice that we had to end, and we, and we have ended that. But what that leaves now is that we've had these essential positions that we absolutely need, and we were using the grant to fund them, and now we, you know, when we've been told by RYAS, you need to be moving these out of the grant, so it makes, it makes that difficult. And in this year, what we're trying to address is the pre-K coordinator. I don't know if you can add anything to that, Mary, or...
Well, we don't have one this year, so, you know, we had one in FY15. We do not have one in FY16.
She resigned, is that the one?
Yes, they resigned, that person resigned at the end of FY15, and because we were unable, at the time that happened, we were unable to cover it in the grant and also unable to cover it in a general fund at that point, because the budget was long over at that point. So, we are operating under not an ideal circumstance with... So we are operating under not an ideal circumstance with a lot of the work being put upon Principal Seidler at Fishing Cove, and it's a, it's a very intensive pre-K, you know, pre-K is a very intensive program.
It also draws Dr. Pizzullo and Dr. Carson for, you know, too much of their time to be at Fishing Cove to take care of this. That program is a growing program, it's an essential program, it's not something that we can just do without, it's by law, we need to have a preschool. And because it's focused on special education, it requires, in the neighborhood, of five hundred IEP meetings a year, and that's what this person is doing, organizing all of that, meeting with families, meeting with teachers, setting plans for students. Each student just doesn't have one meeting a year, there's many follow-ups. So that piece of the job is very intensive, and a number of districts will do that with an administrator. We are trying to do that work with a teacher salary, and we're budgeting a step two, you know, incoming teacher. It may be a higher step teacher actually takes a job, someone in the district that we have a lot of confidence in, but that person would then get replaced with a lower step.
Right, and, oh, I'm sorry, Linda, and I, I mean, I don't disagree in terms of the capability that's needed, I guess my general comment is more is, so if we think that's obviously an area we need or have to pay more attention to, you know, philosophically, should we offset it with something that's, just not everything's important, otherwise it'd be pretty easy to cut, but, you know, with something that's of lesser importance than that position. I'm sorry, Linda.
That's okay. I was just going to make a note about the grant funds and how, over the years, you know, I know I sound like a cheerleader, but having been around for a very long time, watching the way we used to use grant funds, and the way we have now corrected so many things that we were doing improperly, it's just, and, you know, that obviously hurts the budget to some extent, because they were being, they were moving money or using the grants in a way that is not allowed by federal law, and we got in a lot of trouble from that, quite a bit of trouble. We had like a half a million dollars that the taxpayers had to pay back, this was not, no one at this table was here at the time, I just want to make that point. But, and that was just the tip of the iceberg, they had just stopped looking, but they found a half a million in misspent federal monies. Some of it was what you're referring to, Mary, in terms of paying employees, using grant money when you're not supposed to use grant money in different categories, it was pretty complex, but, so it's just taken a lot of years to unravel all of it, and it's cost us money to do it the right way, but, you know, we have to do it the right way. Phil?
I just want to comment on what Mr. Jones said, because I agree with what a lot of you're saying, a lot of what you're saying, and I've said this in some private meetings, but the grants are a blessing and a curse, first of all, I mean, I would never want the school department to be not pursuing, you know, grant funding for programs, because they allow us to do things that we might not be able to do otherwise. The problem and the danger is that when that grant expires, particularly if, well, it really doesn't matter whether you're talking about a salary or whether you're talking about supplies or something, it just triggers a difficult decision to make, and I just want to make sure that it's not an automatic assumption that when that grant expires, that we're going to continue the program with operating funds, because that can't be an automatic assumption. So a difficult decision has to be made, and there really are, you know, three choices there, I think three. One is that unfortunately, it means that without the grant funding, we're unable to continue that program, that may be the situation in some cases. It may be that, as Mr. Jones was saying, and I think this is what our go-to answer has to be, that we need to then make a tough decision, where we need to balance, so we need to balance, including that program into the operating budget, which means that there might be something else that we need to offset it with, something that we do now that might not be as important as this other program, so that it's budget-neutral when the grant runs out. And those are really, you know, your main choices, the third one being the least ideal, which is that, you know, if it turns out that we can't find something that we can offset it with, that you are increasing the budget by that amount. But I think that's usually probably not the right answer. It just needs to be, you know, clear that it's just, can't be an automatic, go the grants out, we'll move that into operating and move on.
Part of the problem is, the state mandates a lot of these programs, that's a neat little trick they do, they give you the money in the beginning, they tell you, you have to do it by law, and then they pull the money. And then we're stuck with a law that we have to abide by, and we don't have the funding for it. They do that a lot, as you know. But, yeah, that makes us have to.
Anecdote that my husband uses in the free puppy, so here's your free puppy.
Exactly.
You need to feed it and get its shots and take it to the vet, and that's exactly what happens with the grants, you know, they're great, but they don't last forever, they really don't.
That's a good point.
I just want to draw people's attention to the point, too, that, you know, as Mr. Jones was pointing out, there are a number of items in the variance columns here that are actually significantly negative as well. So there are a number of areas where we are getting a significant savings on different items from year to year, but this is one item that's in the positive column, because it's adding one position. But, you know, there are also a number of other items that are in positive columns, too. So I think sometimes when you're looking at adding a particular job, that gets some undeserved, undeservedly more attention than some other areas that aren't necessarily a job. And so, you know, we have a lot of choices to make, because there are so many different lines, and as a couple of people have pointed out, it's a matter of prioritizing.
One question I have is line item fifty-seven, three oh nine, the technology-related hardware has a variance of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, is that the Chromebook column?
It will be for next year, yes. So we have money for this year, and then that money, if we move forward, where they anticipated that every year you're going to see that increase until we're at the maximum amount of money, we're just in a leasing capacity for X number of Chromebooks every year.
We lease it. So then, is this, is this, excuse me, one second.
Sure.
Is this to roll out, this one sixty-eight, is that to roll out the one-to-one devices for everyone next year?
Partially. So the strategic plan is partial, we're building to the point of having that three or four hundred thousand dollars that we're estimating we need for the full rollout. So each year we're adding, so that it's not a bam, one-year increase to four hundred thousand dollars, we're trying to get to that point. So that amount of money isn't going to pay for a one-year lease for all of them, because some of the money will need to come out of earmarked fund balance should we decide to go forward, but it gets us closer every year, so that we're operationalizing that amount of money, because if you don't, you're going to get to a point where you can't count that you have fund balance all the time, and if you don't operationalize that lease payment, you're going to be in trouble when the leases come up.
Thank you. Would you do with something to add to that?
Same point, we're weeding, weeding from fund balance money to operational money, trying to do it over the course, and that's written, right, in our original five-year plan, that over the years, we would work toward what we estimate to be in the neighborhood of three to four hundred thousand dollars a year to continually renew leases for this equipment.
Mr. Glassblow?
This is where I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just a little bit here. There's one item that I just had a question on, which is, it looks like you budgeted a pretty large increase in liability insurance, is there something, and this is property liability insurance, is there something specific that's driving that, or is that something we could look into and get back to?
Well, actually, and I will look in and get you some more details, the insurance, property insurance for this year has actually gone up just because of the rate, the way the rates have gone up. The other thing that actually Mr. Jones pointed out, too, and I don't have the answer specifically to this, but there's part of the insurance that's called errors and omissions, that's really part of this property insurance now, it's not a separate line item, so if you'll look, you'll see that there's a positive variance in that separate line item, so it's not a complete offset, because the coverage has gone up, it definitely has gone up, and that's just a function of the market, nothing that is going wrong or nothing that is happening, it's just the way the market is driving those rates pretty much a lot higher.
It's fifty-five, two oh seven, correct, that's the thing.
The other one side.
The positive side, okay, yeah, where we're seeing savings. Mary, Phil, one, Sheila had a point when we were talking about the HVAC renovation, about ensuring that we annualize the maintenance, so we don't run into big things, is that budgeted in this budget?
Yeah, we have some estimates on that, and we're going to be bringing forward to you, we're going to be doing the RFP that we need to do starting in July, but that's really where you go back to that one item, Bob, the contractual services, it's all about, that's really all about facilities and all about the estimates we have on that. So I don't really know where that number's going to land, but we do, we try to, I mean, we do have some maintenance on a lot of that stuff and outside contracts anyway, so we try to increase that a little bit, and we should be fine with those numbers. But we will be going out to bid for that to start in July for a contractor for the new system at the high school. The only other thing that I would also point out is that with the electricity rates, that contract that we have, the commodity purchasing contract that we have expires halfway through next fiscal year, expires December two thousand and sixteen. So we're going to be looking at the pricing on that right now. Phil Bergeron and I from the town are also looking at some other alternative sources of power, but that number does, it makes me a little bit nervous, because I, you know, I don't really know where that market's going to go. I know that it's been indicated to us that the rate we have now is a very good rate, then you have a whole bunch of other things going on, you know, we will see some savings at the high school, I'm not, I can't really project that, one, we just started this year with the new system, the upgraded system, and two, it's been a mild winter again. So it's kind of, that number's a little bit difficult, but it makes me just a little bit nervous, because I know the contract is going to expire, and, you know, it's been three years since we've had a rate increase, so if we do, at least it'll only be half year.
Does it make sense to budget a little higher, then, because right now we have a negative variance?
Well, I don't know, maybe. I mean, you get, there's a lot of, you know, they're anticipating decreases in the energy usage at the high school that we know we will gain because of the better system, with the rate increase, I'm hoping it's going to offset.
Excuse me, Mary's the, speaking of the winter, is the snow plowing FY16 projection, did you, has that been downward revised based on, knock on wood, so far?
Yeah, well, actually, when I started doing this budget.
Right.
We had, you know, we're in February, but it will, we will have some savings in that line item, knock on wood. I see a couple of snowflakes in next week's forecast, but.
Never know. It only takes a few weeks to eat that up.
It really, honestly, that budget is not as much as we spent the prior year, because I think that would be crazy to do that. So it's more of an average number, a more reasonable number based on a normal winter, but I still do think we will have some savings there.
Now, I just jinxed, so you lowered it, because we had seven storms last year?
Yeah, I did not budget the base the same as last year, I think that's crazy to do that. And just like in reverse, it's crazy to budget zero, because you have a good winter.
I would, this is, obviously, if you didn't get a chance to read it, you know, RIAS put out some things that the governor's proposed, so obviously, it's a proposal, we'll have to see, there's a mention to allow districts to deduct three hundred and fifty dollars for each charter school student they send, and some districts, six fifty, the more urban centers, I guess.
You deduct from what?
From their tuition, so.
The tuition is set by RIDE.
They would deduct them at three hundred and fifty dollars.
Special ed or?
Assuming it gets passed, these are all proposals.
Is around what, so what are we looking at, that, a bit of three hundred and fifty?
So times, if it's a hundred-something students, about thirty-five thousand, roughly. Just again, assuming these are all.
For a hundred, yeah, we don't know.
You know, one thing that caught my eye in this, and again, seeing it's very, not hypothetical, but very general at this stage, I guess I'd ask Phil and Michelle, you know, it mentions, obviously, the SAT funding, which again, seems somewhat of a subsidy to middle and upper-class families, not that I wouldn't benefit from that, but what caught my eye was more that this notion from the governor that the SAT will supplant the park. And so my question would be, is, putting aside the discussion of whether that's even a good idea to begin with, given the SAT is a, you know, has a purposeful point for college readiness, and it's debatable whether it's an even good predictor of that, and why we would make all students take it or make it as a graduation requirement, that aside, would that mean that we wouldn't test for the park at all? And I'm starting then to wonder, all the money we've put into the park and Common Core and some of these other things, and I know they're somewhat not the same, right, the core standards that we develop curriculum, but I'm trying to think, from a budgetary standpoint, a lot of stuff we've done to move forward, thinking park will be the assessment, how that might be changed if all of a sudden this generic SAT becomes the requirement.
So according to federal, the federal law, we have to have a testing in math, annual testing in math and in ELA, so that will always stay, the three through eight, for sure. The latest, that, some of the discussions at RIDE at the last network meeting that I was at, some of the ideas they're throwing out or discussing, I should say, is those assessments in math and ELA for park going from grade three to grade nine, and then using either the AP scores or some, or the SAT scores, or some other form of measurement that students can demonstrate competency.
Okay. So, if I can add, right now, we've received nothing in writing, in fact, I believe it's been held off that way, just to hold on until the governor makes her speech, which is happening tonight. And I know this week, there is a superintendent's executive session meeting, we're going to be doing a lot of discussion of these topics, but so far, Ken Wagner's proposals on these issues, the idea of looking at the diploma system, I know there's concern particularly in urban districts where a number of students, as you recall, a couple of years ago, when they were getting to mandatory park testing for graduation, that whole debate, Providence in particular was looking at a sizable segment of their students who would not graduate because they hadn't passed the park test, and what an issue that would be. So, right now, to my understanding, is there's a lot of brainstorming going on about what are some alternatives, possibly including the SAT, sounds like with the governor's proposal, maybe her thinking is that that's something in the future that may replace the park for the high school end of it. But there's nothing in front of us right now that says definitively even what the proposal is, whether, and whether that is something that RIDE handles, the state legislature, districts have some say over how they put it together, so a lot of what-ifs right now.
Okay, thank, because I'm just, yeah, I didn't think about the three through eight, so, so I'm just, for the short run, just thinking we're sort of resourcing based on the park being implemented like it was last year, but I think with some shorter testing windows, right? We're.
Right, we had a combined testing window now, so we don't, we no longer administering the PBA and the EOI, which is the performance-based assessment and the end-of-the-year assessment, those are combined into one test at this point. We are, we are field testing in, at Davisville Middle School and High School, which adds a test, but that is, certain people were randomly selected, and we got lucky, and we have to do that this year, but we won't have to do it again for another three years. And just to, to your point about the investment, the investment in the Common Core state standards, the standards are what we teach to, so I don't think that's ever a loss as far as an investment is concerned, you know, and whatever tool we end up using to measure, you know, we have to measure in some way by federal standards, so.
I was just looking, again, these are proposals, but lowering the high-cost special ed from five hundred percent to four hundred percent, and do we have anyone who?
We do, it's very small, we end up, maybe, maybe we get fifteen grand from the state on our high-cost special ed categorical, so we would increase something, but it's not going to be a dramatic amount of money.
I just, pretty tight.
The only other, I think, that was really more of a comment, I've been specific on the budget at this point, was having some of the data, like we talked about, Phil, like the reading levels for kindergarten, to complement, you know, whatever budget we end up sending forward, I think it's important to show some of those outcomes measures for the investments we've been making in these areas when we present it to the town council.
I agree. I agree. And the data we have so far is, it's very good, but, but at some point, we'll put together something more formal, particularly when we go to the town council, to show how that investment has paid off.
Did you have any comments?
Couple of questions that I'll ask Mrs. King later, because again, I mean, they're just, I'm sure they're similar to the last question I had, there's often offsetting numbers to some of these, so, for now, I'm.
Do you have any questions, comments?
Not, yeah, comments, mine are more general in nature, not specific to line items, but I think we need to realize that 4% is unrealistic, it's never gonna apply. The town, the taxes are the biggest concern of the residents of the town, it's a concern of homeowners, it's a concern for businesses and economic development, and this year, with the new reporting format of the audit, it's in your face about the unfunded liabilities of pensions, and next year, OPEB's gonna put land on there, but they mentioned it to us at our last meeting, how much that is. The town is seriously in debt, probably a hundred million dollars, in addition to all the operating budgets that this is part of. And that said, on the budget, to be, to look at specific line items, what I would really like to see is a column of where we are, balance, what is the current balance in a line item, and a date for that report, so that we can see how you estimated that.
Well, you have the FY16 projection, so that's a full-year projection, and I can tell you that when I do the budget, I usually look at the year before, because that, I know what the actuals are, and I'll look at the year before in conjunction with the current year, but by the time I start this budget, I'm starting this budget in November or December, I have very few months under my bill of payments. So, I really am looking more at what the actuals were, so, and for this example, would be FY15. And when I dig into the detail of the accounts, I'll know that, okay, so, so-and-so, we don't use this particular software program anymore, or maybe we added this software program. So, I can certainly get you that information, I don't think it's gonna be of any value to you. I really think what you need to be looking at is the FY16 projection, we have that, I had given that to you, compared to FY15 actuals. That's really kind of the important thing, but I can certainly get you that as of a point in time, we, you know, my controller and I do, you know, if you're looking for a year-to-date actual, I'm just concerned that it's gonna bring up more questions.
They're almost gonna need another meeting, is what I was gonna say.
Well, a lot of, yeah, and a lot of the answers are gonna be, well, because, you know, we haven't, that expense hasn't occurred yet, or whatever.
Yeah, I understand that, there are definitely, and some will be 100% because.
Exactly, exactly. But I can do that, or if there's any other way you want me to put the years next to each other, I mean, I sent you the years, I've got, you have FY14 actuals, FY15 actuals, FY16 budget, FY16 projection, and FY17 preliminary. So, even comparing to a few years back, you know, the world has changed, we've had so many changes, you know what I mean?
No, that, if you could get a recent report of where we are, that would be very helpful.
So, a recent, you're looking for year-to-date as opposed to projection for the whole year?
Right.
Well, and actually, you can see that in the reports that I put on the financials every month. So, pretty soon, this is February, you're gonna have January come out pretty soon, so when January comes out, probably next week, I'll point, I'll out to you the column that you would look at for that. What's already, because what will, you'll see budget, you'll see year-to-date expended, and you'll see remaining budget, that's all in the reports that we do every month.
And as I said, it's really tricky to, the numbers are there, but what to do with those numbers without all the backup knowledge is, makes it really hard to work with, but, yeah, it helps, but.
That's the way I've always worked with budgets.
Yeah, sure, yeah. It's sort of like looking at, you know.
It's definitely a piece of it, but it's, it's, you know, you're looking at a lot of stuff, so, but I'll point that out for you. So, that'll probably be soon, today's only the second, so January's not really closed yet, but I can have that for you.
Yeah, I think, but, you know, what concerns me, Sheila, back to your point, is, you know, you look at like the pensions, so on the teacher side, you know, we're actually falling next year. You know, on the municipal side, which I know we have a few in the MUR system, but it's a smaller proportion, obviously, the town folks in the MUR side, you know, that's 44%. I mean, you know, our healthcare, retiree healthcare, our line is down 90%, right? Because we've basically weaned that.
Oh, yeah, we don't, we don't have that. That liability is strictly the town's liability when it comes to the OPEB and it comes to the pension.
I mean, like the auditor said, when they looked at having to do accrued compensation time for absences, it was like four million, you know, 90% of that is the town, only 10% is ours, so I do think there's obviously some collected things that need to be done on the town side that we've started doing. I know it's a small amount, although I said to deduct $25 from this budget, right? Could you talk about the, like, going to the web-based paper, or the paperless statements and that kind of stuff?
So, we've done a lot in the district, and, you know, our controller is very, very conscious of trying to do as much as possible online. So, what we've recently rolled out is the opportunity for employees to have their bi-weekly check stub emailed to them instead of printed. And, you know, all in all, it might not seem like a lot of money, but it's a much more efficient thing to do, it's more efficient, especially if you have direct deposit, you really don't need a printout. But there is a law in the state of Rhode Island that you have to at least provide opportunity for employees to see all of their deductions, so that could mean a bunch of computers everywhere, or you need to have a hard copy available for them, or, you know, we're, now we're emailing. Small amount of money, but in all of the things that we've done to save, you know, W2s next year, people will be able to get online instead of, you know, instead of getting a hard copy, all of the things that we've done to try to make things as paperless as possible, I'm hoping to be able to come forward to you next year with what they call Tyler Content Management. That's gonna make our purchase orders paperless as well. We've already gone paperless in the schools, the schools are already entering their own purchase requisitions, but the Tyler Content Management gives us another feature that we can use with vendors, we have some vendors that we can, information goes directly to them, so we're not, you know, printing out a whole bunch of paper and keeping a whole bunch of paper. So, we've done a lot of that because it's more efficient for our staff, but all of that will add up into savings as well. The other thing about the pension, two things about the pension, in FY18, there is an article that I will share with everybody, that I had discussed it at the last meeting, our, the pension rates for the LEAs are gonna go up looking dramatically. The estimate for the earnings on the pensions was seven and a half percent, and they fell way, way short of that. So, we expect to see big increases in our pension costs, our pension percentage in FY18. But in terms of the other post-employment benefits, this district hasn't for many, many, many years, has not offered its retirees the rich retirement benefits that are offered in other districts and that are offered in the town. The teachers that we have in the district, they remain on our healthcare for two months after their retirement, normally, teachers retire as of June, and that's it. They can remain on our healthcare afterwards, but it has to be at full cost, 100% of whatever the group plan cost is. So, when it comes to that other post-employment benefits, we have very little of that. The biggest part that we have is an old state law that's still on the books about life insurance coverage. So, prior to the current teacher's contract that's expiring, if teachers retired, the rate at which they had health, life insurance at the time, if it was a benefit, is the same rate they will always have to be charged. So, the rest of the rate increases have to be absorbed by the, by the school department, and that's actually a state law under municipal law. But any of those, that post-employment benefit stuff, that's, that's not us. I mean, we don't have, you know, we don't have the healthcare for life, we don't have, we don't have any of that for the school department. There's, there are no employees that are under that healthcare for life option at all. There are no lingering from the past, we just plain don't have it. So, that's kept our, that keeps that number for us down a lot.
Yeah, two things. One, something we did maybe three, four years ago was related to retirement incentive, and that brought a lot of money into our budget, into our coffers, and I think it was offered to, I forget what the exact circumstances were, but the employees would be at a certain level, and then we would be able to hire in at step ones, and we would save a lot of money that way. That's just something to think about either maybe next year or at some point, because it brought, I forget how much money, but it was really, really successful.
It was a few hundred thousand dollars, and there are a couple of things with that. We don't really have as many people that close to retirement, with, especially with the changes in the pension, you know, that got some people that were closer to retirement, and, yeah, you'll probably even, you would always have some if you offered that kind of benefit, even though if we don't think they're close to retirement age-wise. But it really all depends on what you're offering, and with the healthcare changes that we've made as well, it would be a balancing act between what you're offering and analyzing what you're saving, because our healthcare plan, you know, the rates are down and everything, but we don't have as many people on healthcare anymore either. So, it really all depends on what that care is that you.
Yeah, a few years ago, the benefits were much richer, and so we saved a lot more money. And just, I'd just make a couple of general comments then, and that is, you know, based on some of the things we talked about tonight with the radical changes that we've made over the past, you know, six, seven years in this organization, we have completely transformed the organization, I mean, just completely in every way. The retirement incentive program, the outsourcing of janitorial, the changing the contracts every year, and rolling back some of the things that were costing us so much money, trying to, with Davisville Academy, trying to bring our students back here and educate them in a less restrictive, less expensive environment. I mean, just, I could go on and on and on, all the work that's been done, and I just wanna congratulate the administration once again for just an amazing job that we've completely transformed the entire school department. And in all fairness, I think we're asking for basically what we need, and if, and if we need, if we need to, basically, if we want to see cuts, then people should offer what they want to see cut. Pick a line item where you think it should be cut. I know no one wants to hear it, but, you know, the town, they wanna build a whole new building, they're putting money into an old building that's basically crumbling, they have had raises every single year of 3% pretty much for their unions, we have not. Just in, you know, as a matter of fairness, we've asked for what we need, we've done a good job, and I think we should, you know, hold and support the school department as what we need, if there's not a lot of fluff in this budget, and I don't think there is. We had three years of almost zero increase, and that's why we need more money now, because as Dr. Thornton tried to explain many times to us, it compounds as the years go on, that kind of a zero, a couple of years in a row, is, is going to be hard to recoup from down the road a couple of years, that's where we are now. So, not to say that obviously we should have the taxpayers in mind, and we should look as closely as we can, but tremendous work has been done, and we are doing that, so I just wanna give credit where credit's due, and support the school department and the request.
And I also wonder if anybody has also had an opportunity, it was, to take a look at the survey results for the town comprehensive plan rewrite. I know Mrs. McGovern is heavily involved in those committees, but there were a lot of responses from citizens that responded to the comp plan questions, and Dr. O'Jay and I had compiled a lot of them that we had put forward at the joint budget meeting, but a lot of very positive comments, I mean, the way vast majority of the comments about the school were very complimentary, you know, they'd like to see increased funding, they would like to see no cost of funding.
That's not true.
I totally disagree, I see it right here, and we see the numbers, how they came out. It was a particular question about funding.
They didn't ask that question, they didn't ask that question. That's the problem.
Okay, I have it right here, it says.
Well, try to cut anything in this town and see what turns out, and you'll see whether they wanna cut education in the town, it's not really popular when you go to.
Public school funding, do you think we should have more, less, or the same level for each of these areas of concern? It's a specific question right in the town comp plan.
But the question was, is school funding a concern?
No, the question is, do you think we should have more, less, or the same level of school funding?
And the majority said more?
Yes.
Can you give us the numbers, Mary?
Yeah, actually, yeah, more. Of the two, 45.8% said more, 38.2% said keep the same level, and 16% of the respondents said less. And also, the, all the comments, you know, very favorable comments, so, I mean, it's right there as part, and either this comp plan is valid, the survey's valid, or it's not, it is done, being done as part of the vast override of the town comprehensive plan, so.
You know, as, as Mrs. Evans Otto pointed out, and has been made clear, I mean, when we're looking at pensions next year, for instance, and the rise that is definitely coming our way, this budget, right here, really doesn't add much to what we need. I mean, we committed, or, you know, maybe commitment's too strong a word, but we set it as a goal, as a school committee, to address the issue of school start times. There's nothing here that does that. Another goal the school committee has set is to do something with the track and field. There's nothing in here set aside to do any of that. If I could, you know, and I guess when you put forward a budget, what isn't included are things you would like to get to. I would like to do more, have a more robust resources for marketing the district. The commissioner, the governor are all about opening up districts to, you know, students from all of Rhode Island. We have a high school with a couple of career and tech programs, and we're growing that, and we want to attract students from, out of the district, we were talking about the eighth grade parents night, and how, you know, we really feel like, and we're seeing this from other schools, you know, good promotional videos, really professional stuff, not, not, no offense to anybody in the district, but not something that's set up in, by the comms, you know, the communication students at the high school, but professionally done materials to attract families to what a tremendous option it is for them to come to North Kingston, come to North Kingston High School. I also feel that we need to, not by a lot, but by about a point four, increase our guidance assistance at the high school, and Dr. Manziri is here, and she can talk to that if the council would like that to happen. But, you know, the same guidance counselors are, you know, pulled to work for, you know, Davisville Academy students, which they didn't have that job before, but also to make the connections to students from other districts now that we're trying to attract for career and tech programs. And, you know, in my years at Charahoe, there were guidance counselors set aside just for the career and tech, just to make connections to those families who are coming from out of the district. Robotics is catching on, like wildfire, just this past weekend, the North Kingston Robotics team won the state competition, they'll be traveling to Pennsylvania for national competition. We are filling those classes to the brim, there's a waiting list, the kids love it at the middle schools as well, and right now, we have .5 robotics at the middle schools. That may be something where we can pull from other electives to make it more, but, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot to say, let's add another .5 at each middle school to make sure we have the manpower there to address this desire for a tremendous high-tech elective, that, I mean, isn't that the kind of thing we want our kids to be getting involved in? And that's not included here, and that would seem like a real easy thing to address. We talked about the transportation needed for the school start times, the neighborhood at $300,000 to $400,000. We talked about the track and field, which even as a. We talked about the track and field, which even as a combined effort with the town and, uh, say the sports boosters, if we were to come up with one-third of that money, that would be about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's not to mention, we, there's nothing here yet, you know, we've, we're, we're always looking at fund balance for these things. Security items that we still, some we've gotten to, many we still need to get to. It's always become a lot more important when you have a school shooting that makes national attention. But, you know, it's still important, we still need to address those kinds of things. HVAC, we're not done with that at the high school. There, you, you look at the carpeting in some of our elementary schools, and it is awful.
That's a hell-
The carpeting in the auditorium at the high school is awful. The PA system in the auditorium at the high school needs major revisions, and, and that's, th- those are kind of low priority items on a capital, um, you know, a capital plan includes twenty million dollars worth of items that we need to get to in the next few years. So, um, you look at some of the playgrounds in the district, and anyone can look at them and say, you know, this is North Kingston, that, that blacktop should look a heck of a lot better than that. Those basketball nets and, you know, they're, they're rusting away, and, you know, we need to address those kinds of things. They don't seem like a lot, but those are the things that keep getting put off year after year after year. And when you have a few years, like we've had in the past, I, I mentioned last time, our increases haven't been four percent, they've averaged about one and a half percent over the last five years.
That's it.
Nearly enough to cover the cost increase.
It's, that's, that's hardly keeping up with inflation. Um, you know, meanwhile, you know, medical expenses go up by six, you know, and, and we just pointed out all these different areas that are going up by, you know, numbers so much higher than that, and so what are we going to do? Just not do medical care anymore? I mean, at a certain point, we have to say, if this is the kind of educational program we want in our district, we have to pay for it. And there are going to be years that four percent is very realistic, and as I pointed out, in the early two thousands, there were years where the increases were over eight percent. And the average for about six years in the early two thousands was about five and a half percent, but now four percent seems like it's absolutely ridiculous. And, and I get, it's a matter of perspective, but, um, but, you know, next year, I don't know, particularly with those pension increases that we're talking about, I don't know if four percent is even going to get us to a point where we're just rolling over the program. It's going to mean, if we, if we get four percent, it means we have to cut significantly from the programming that we're doing. And we've done that for years, and I don't know where we're getting it anymore.
If we do it this year, and then we get hit with a pension, we're going to be putting ourselves in a worse spot.
And that point that you made about it being exponential, you take a zero in one year, that, you, you've just taken a zero for many years, because you don't make that up, even if you take a four percent the following year, you know, that-
We cut one year, point, point eight, point oh eight or something, point eight of an increase, and the town cut us to zero. We cut, we cut everything before we gave them the budget, and they cut us to zero, and they took like three or four percent that year, and that's been happening every single year. And I don't think the taxpayers and the townspeople want that, just like you read in the comp plan, Mary, I don't think that's what they want. I'm not saying go crazy, but I don't think we are, so.
You know, about five years ago, when we had the bond for a little over six million dollars to replace the roof at Davisville Middle School, and we started to, um, you know, push to make that happen, um, the majority of the school committee, the majority of the town council, the majority of everybody that I had spoken to who knew anything about town politics said, you can absolutely forget it. It's right after two thousand and eight, there's no way this town, because they care so much about their taxes, are going to vote for that. And guess what? They voted for it because they value the schools. And thankfully, we were able to put a new roof on a school that had been leaking like crazy for years and years.
There's a lot of administration-
You know, so, I think when people understand that they have a good product and they want to live in a community that has a good school system, I think they are willing to, um, if they know that's where the money's going, they're willing to support it. And the survey validates that point.
You know, there were also overwhelming, you know, why did you move into town? Um, I, I mean, actually, it, I can share with you what, what we summarized, but, um, quality of public school system, the schools, we love the schools, you know, children doing well in the schools.
Right, but, the thing is, in this town, less than a third of the houses even have a child in the schools. There's four thousand kids in schools, there's twenty-eight thousand people in the town. We have a lot of seniors who are getting taxed out of their homes, we have vacant businesses-
Is there a town that you moved to where there are no students? Cause there isn't.
No, no, of course not, but there's, there's that balance, that we have to be cognizant that we have a good school system, but it is costly, and the money comes from, you know, the families and, uh, empty nesters and retirees. Uh, we don't have a very good business base right now, and I know the town's working on that, but, um, that is, the tax rate is something that scares businesses away, so it's that fine dance, so, you know, a balance that we have to try to find, um, to have a tax rate that businesses will come so that we can have a good tax base to support all, all municipal departments, including schools. But, um, I, I don't see four percent going when, when, like you said, there is a, nothing but discussion about the condition of town hall and the annex and where they're going to end up, and a possibility of some type of, um, government center, whether they build or occupy an existing building or, um-
Probably.
Renovated building, yeah, there, there is expenses associated with that. That committee's meeting the first time tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
So, um, but, I think it's important to recognize that there, there is limited funding and, um, yes, and, and they went through that big, um, lawsuit, really, negotiations and, and lawsuits about the fires, uh, to try to save money on, on fire expenses, and, um, that, that will be going, well, that contract that's in place is for a few more years, so we're fortunate there, but, um, other contracts are coming due this year, so, teachers, police, and I think the ten thirty-three as well. They, they face the same challenges that we do in a lot of ways, but, but they have not made the same efforts we have. I mean, that's just, there's evidence of that clearly, so that's where kind of the frustration comes in.
Um, one thing I think, um, to get back to Greg's point, um, you know, since, since we tossed it around a little as a philosophical point, I, I would think it's appropriate, though, to, to ask the superintendent to come back to us with, with options, though, on an offset. Um, let him work, work that and, and give us the choices and the, and obviously the trade-offs we're making, if, if we chose to do so.
For the pre-K coordinator position?
Right, cause I, I totally agree. I mean, obviously the pre-K students are, by nature, a very, um, group that needs a lot of those kind of interventions, meetings, et cetera, so, so clearly that's a capability we need. Um, I think it's just our responsibility, though, to have the superintendent, you know, tee up our options and what he thinks are, is the, the trade-offs, and, and go from there with that, so if, if that would be the consensus of the group to, to ask the superintendent to do that.
Is that for one position? What is-
The pre-K coordinator position that we added?
Right, and it's not necessarily a, a offsetting FTE, right? I think superintendents in the past have-
A dollar amount, yeah.
The, the flexibility to just come up with a dollar amount offset.
But the logic to that being that, as Dr. O'Jay has said, there's really only one add in this budget, that if we can identify an offsetting savings for it, we can eliminate even that.
Well, we can have some suggestions whether or not the committee will agree to do that, is another whole issue, but yes.
The, the question was to have the superintendent make his recommendation as to where we could find an offsetting item, and then what the, you know, repercussions of that would be.
Thing is, every year, if you look at the budget versus actual, um, at least the past couple of years, we end up with a million to a million and a half over. Uh, and, to me, if we look carefully at the fiscal year sixteen, year-to-date, we should be identified, be able to identify those line items that, uh, we can scale back on the FY seventeen and fund that position, that is minor compared to the total, and even fund the change of start times if, if that's a priority.
You're not going to see anywhere near the fund balance that we've had in the last couple of years, you just don't have as many changes. The, the health care has settled down, although we do have new employees that come in that don't opt to take our health care, but people coming out of our health care have come down, uh, you know, that's settled down quite a bit. Um, we've had, we had, you know, we always have issues with special education, you never can plan enough for special education. Um, it, this is a very, this is a very tight year. So, I disagree that you will be able to take FY sixteen and identify an FY seventeen where you can fund half a million dollars, you're not going to be able to find it, especially since you can see that we have only one added position proposed, uh, in FY seventeen. Um, so, you know, I, I know, I, not a very popular opinion, we can cut supplies, we can cut anything else there is to fund that pre-K position, but you're making a mistake if you do that.
But we've, we've done it before, and then we've-
Because it is only, that's only a one-time thing.
And we've actually reversed it in the middle of the year because we couldn't sustain the cut.
That's correct.
Multiple times.
And if you're looking for a sustainable cut to fund a sustainable position, you need to cut a position. And I know that that's not a popular opinion, but it's the only way that if you're looking for sustainability, positions and holding off the positions are the only sustainability. You can say you're going to take another year and you're not going to buy pens and pencils, it's not realistic to say that that's a sustainable position.
And i- if you take out Davisville Academy, which is a program that we added to save an enormous amount of money from out-of-district tuition, so we added staff members to do that, if you take that out, we've cut significant numbers of staff members over the past five years or so, cut back significantly.
Except in administration. That is, that is a concern too, because our administration's up twenty percent in just a year.
Well, you know what? I mean, in the years before I came, I know that there were dramatic cuts in administration because people like to say, look, we're cutting administrators, like they're not so important. Every administrator I have right now is vitally important to the, the mission of this district, every one. I can't think of one I can do without. In fact, I need a pre-K coordinator to help out, and I'm going to try to do it without an administrator, to save some money. Most districts have an administrator, basically, an assistant principal salary doing that work, and they get some summer programming out of the person as well, as Mr. Jones was asking about that piece, but it's going to cost you more. You know, I, y- you get, you get to a point, what kind of school department do we want? And, you know, um, in past years, when people have said, well, Dr. O'Jay, shouldn't you be cutting more? And, and I come back with, well, I only have certain things I can cut. I mean, even this past year, um, against my recommendation, uh, the committee cut back on positions at Davisville Middle School, then it added them, some of them back. It, it, we had to add, uh, you know, point two teacher, half a TA, um, in September and October of this year. So, we get to the point where we're trimming back as far as we can, and then we get into a problem in the fall where we're out of compliance, becomes some kind of special education law, and I have to appeal to the committee to put the money back. So, I mean, that's how tight we are. If I had it somewhere else where someone's just not doing anything and they're available to fill that other job, that's where I'm going to go. So, you know, we're cut to the bone in terms of staff. It, there's nothing I can cut without just being irresponsible or completely, uh, out of compliance with the contract or the law. We don't have it. So, and that's where the money is. After that, if, if I'm required to cut hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're looking at the sports program, and we're looking at all those extra things, and the only reason I would go there is because I can't. I can't go to where the contract is because that's all spoken for. I can't go to where the law is, where the special education is, it's all spoken for, it's all supposed to be there. But those, but the, you know, the sports programming and that sort of thing is not. It's available to cut. I don't want to cut it. I think that people in this town want a great sports program, they want great arts, you know, they want an engineering program, they want a business program, they want these things, and it makes our high school, you know, statewide, great reputation, and our other schools as well. But, you know, if that's what we want, we have to pay for it. And you can't just say, keep cutting, especially when the things that we're required to pay for, like health care, go up so dramatically.
Just one quick comment. Our job as school committee members is to support the education of the North Kingston students. The town council decides the bottom-line number, but our job is to promote and advocate for the schools, basically, and I'm not saying that doesn't mean look for cuts, but I, again, I mean, I don't have to repeat myself, I always do at this table, saying all of the efforts that have been made over the years have been Herculean, and they have made, it's transformed the entire school district. We've done a great job, and then, at that point then, I feel like we need to support what the superintendent's putting forward as being an honest depiction of what we need. I, I, it's not that I don't support what you're saying, and we can ask the superintendent to put a position in front of us that we can, but I'm not going to vote to cut it, I doubt very much I'm going to vote to cut it, because, uh, the expert is telling me, and I see evidence of, that we've cut everywhere, and we're to the point where we've got what we need, or we, we only ask for what we need, and then I'm going to defer to him at that point.
Mr. Jones, do you have any comments about the administration and the continued discussions all around town of how top-heavy we are for administration? Cause I think you do.
Oh, no.
We've had this discussion before.
I, well, I, I think you look at some things, and if you, you know, by law, we have to have a superintendent, and, um, I don't know if by law we have to have assistant superintendent, but for a four thousand student-
By contract, you do.
By four thousand student district, I think we need to have an assistant superintendent. Um, I mean, clearly every school has to have a principal. Um, I, I think if you sort of look at the, the, just what makes sense, um, you're pretty much defining most, most of the administrative positions we have. Um, I do think, though, um, part of the concern might be is simply that we have some administrators based on the number of buildings, and I, you know, I won't prejudge the work that's being done by the folks we've hired out, but I think we just have too many buildings, right? And so, if one area we want to look at is becoming leaner in administrators, we need to look seriously at consolidating schools, right? Because you can make an argument, we have two middle schools, I'm never going to say one middle school can get away with one principal, so, you know, they have two administrators, you could make a cogent argument that one single middle school with nine hundred students could run just fine with three administrators, right? And so you would save an administrator there. Um, and clearly-
It is a good school, though.
And that's, that's a good point.
It is a good point.
But to make that transition, it's going to cost a lot of money to get there. You're, you're talking about building a wing on a school or building a new school.
So, these are, these are decisions that I think obviously have to be weighed in that, um, you know, fewer buildings is going to be less maintenance, less deferred maintenance, less future maintenance, a new building would be more energy efficient, hopefully.
Except that there's a lot of building going on in town, and there's tons of homes left, all these bedrooms, there's four hundred new homes, largest development ever in North Kingston history being built.
We're going to get a study back-
Right, but that's why, that's why we're, that's why we're having a study to, to look at that.
Right, but we do need to look at that option, what you're talking about.
You know, I mean, this high school was built with a sixteen-hundred student capacity, it's at fourteen-hundred, so there's clearly some capacity we have around town. You know, our transportation costs are based on the number of schools that the buses have to go to is one thing, so clearly consolidation there would help. Um, so I, I think there's some points there. I, I think your point, Sheila, though, I mean, it's always useful to, to look at, you know, how those things come out. Last year, we ran roughly a two and a half percent overage on a sixty-million-dollar budget, the town ran three point seven- percent overage on a sixty-million-dollar budget. The town ran three-point-seven percent on a twenty-five-million-dollar budget. So, I think it'd be a useful exercise on both sides to look at how those differences between budget and actuals end up being. You know, in our case, I think we said half was healthcare savings or breakage, and I know we started to budget more for breakage. I, you know, it's up to the town to figure out on the town side. Maybe it's from the firefighters. Maybe it's, it's from other things. You know, I do think it's useful always to look at, when you have that variance, you know, budgeting's not exact science, but, you know, to look at those gaps and see, are they things? And we've got to be cognizant. Obviously, we had, without going into too much detail, a student come in who cost us over a hundred-something thousand dollars, right?
Not just one.
So, you know, those you can't control for, I think that would be something more useful maybe the state could look at is, is, I know they have the high-cost one, but they had more of a risk-sharing kind of setup for, for districts with, with unusual special education requirements that come up. So, so I think it would be, you know, always useful to come back and, and see where the, the budget-to-actual gaps were and, and how that plays out. I was going to ask, Ms. King, I asked you this last, I think, a couple of years ago, and I don't know if it changed much, but our transportation costs for private school students?
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, you said it was ninety-eight thousand?
It probably is just going up.
Right. So, I mean, when, again, you can debate some decisions that are made, but, you know, there's a hundred thousand right there for, we have no choice. But I mean, I think, I don't know if people realize, when you add textbooks, there's probably a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars we pay for, you know, North Kingsdale residents. I'll say that. But I mean, who aren't attending North Kingsdale schools on that. You know, I, I've made the point about charter schools. I, I would love some concept of school choice, whether it's open enrollment or something. I think the babysit way we went with charter schools, you can look at our line. I mean, it's one budgeted, we'll see what it is, but it's one-point-four million dollars. You know, if we weren't paying those charter schools and we absorbed the cost at probably a quarter, probably to absorb them, that would be eight-hundred thousand that we could return to the taxpayers or fund some of these things, which are much smaller increase. So, I just think it's difficult, some of the choices that, that decisions that have been made sort of box us in. So, and I made this point at the last meeting. I would hope the town council would relook our budget timelines. We're going to make the decision. When's it due, February?
I was going to, I was going to remind everyone.
And you already told.
Next week, we'll have a meeting, and this will be on the agenda again for any more questions or open items. We'll have a break the following week, and then we come back on February twenty-third. We need a vote on a number, a solid number, because it's due to the town manager that following Monday, which I think, as we said, was February twenty-ninth, Phil? Twenty-third, twenty-ninth?
Yeah, twenty-ninth.
So, I mean, we're essentially making decision before the charter school lottery, before really any substantive discussion on the, the governor's budget at the, at the thing, before the March census, which determines the funding formula numbers, and the funding formula may change. I mean, clearly, that, the town has some more flexibility, and I assume we'll keep talking with them during that period before it's, the final charter requires us in May, whatever full moon is in May, that we have to do it. But, you know, I feel as a committee, we're hamstrung a little because we're going to make, you know, I, I'm hoping our charter school number's too high, but, you know, we won't know. I'm hoping some of these things in the funding formula play out, but we don't know.
But you worked really hard on that. It wasn't just wishes. You, you worked hard on the charter school issue.
Right. But I mean, just as a committee, you know, we have another month of actuals, right? You know, it would be, it would be really helpful, and I hope the town would look at it and go, you know, can we trade off some of their time back to our time so we can give them a better product? And maybe have the charter committee look at that, and look at the whole, you know, a lot more towns than us wait till end of May or June to make. And I know there's an issue with if voters want to do a referendum, and we have to account for that. But, you know, I feel the town's a little hamstrung too in making some decisions. So, I think that's an area we should look at down the road. It's like consolidation. Some of these things I know were there that, that hopefully we can get to in the short run.
But some towns are earlier than us.
Very few, though.
Yeah, South Kingsdale's done by the end of January, and there's very little, there's very little flan, fanfare and drama. You know, that, that's all done behind the scenes. You know, there's a percentage that's agreed to, and, and that's what everybody works in, and they've been consistently funded. So, they're, they're early. I think, probably EG is probably about the same timeframe as we are.
Yeah, well, they have the town, they have a town meeting.
Right.
But of course, South Kingsdale's working on, what, a billion-dollar bigger, or whatever it is, a much, a much larger tax base, right, than we do on that stuff. So, I won't hold up on some of this stuff. But I just, I guess I disagree one point with you, Linda, on, you know, if you look at sixteen-two-nine, there's twenty-six things school committees do, and they sometimes conflict, I won't say they conflict with each other, but there's tension between them. You know, we identify needs. You know, we, we do our best to provide for the educational thing. It doesn't always mean that it's what we want in our school system. So...
No, I agree with you, Bob. I mean, I was on the committee when we had zero. I've cut. I've cut a lot more things than you have, Bob, with all these stuff.
No, I agree.
We had deep, deep cuts when I was on the committee, and I voted for the cuts because we were in a really tough situation. And you're right, there's a tension there. I acknowledge that. I think we need to be a little bit more proactive, like, for example, on this issue of getting the middle schools. Maybe, and I, I would want to hear the superintendent's thoughts. I know he's interested, and we've talked about it before, on having, on maybe building a middle school. But we are going to be squarely behind the eight ball because the town is looking to build this huge town hall thing, and also, there will be public bonds for the Wickfordale if that happens, the way it's being spoken about with the TIFs. That will be public money. So...
No, it's not. That's not public money. No.
Yes, it is. It's public bond money that's going to go towards the sewers for the project. And then, yeah, it is.
Right, right now, Linda, we are, we, you know, we have commissioned NESDAQ to do, you know, kind of a deep study of enrollment trends. Once we have that information, the group that's been looking at this can come forward with some suggestions for the committee about, you know, what they would want to do in terms of long-term planning, and whether that would include some kind of consolidation of two middle schools to one. And maybe, my, my thinking is, at that point, we would be looking for some project managers, maybe to commission a project manager to put together some solutions to that problem, to say, "Okay, we, we would want, you know, better efficiency. We would want a consolidation of middle schools. We would want fewer elementary schools," with the idea that, you know, ten years down the road, we're looking at this kind of level of enrollment is the best guess. So, but, you know, we're still in, in a, in a phase right now where we're probably a year or two before we even have the idea out there, much less an agreement to go, say, for a bond, to do something of that kind of nature. And even then, I mean, we're talking about, well, we need to continue to save money. And long-term, we will save money. But short-term, we got to, we got to do a major construction project to, to, to put that in place, you know? So, there's, there's a give to get. And, you know, I, I think, I think what we owe the taxpayers of this community is a long-term vision that emphasizes efficiency and doesn't sacrifice quality. That's what we owe them. And the way this town's been budgeting year after year, because we've asked every year, "Can you please provide us with a capital fund so that we can, you know, maintain buildings instead of, you know, pick up the pieces after, you know, the inspectors come in and tell you to shut the place down?" I mean, that should be a lesson to us all, that town hall. That's not the way to have a long-term vision. What we should be doing is having regular maintenance on these things and keeping them up to date and keeping them modern, so you're spending a little money on a regular basis instead of facing a disaster and spending a ton of money after the fact.
Which we have done with our fund balance that we continue to be criticized for having, that is really not, in the grand scheme of things, a lot of money, but it has afforded us the opportunity to replace a boiler, a fishing cove that had to be done, to kick in quite a bit of money for the heating ventilation at the high school, you know, a, a myriad of things. So, again, I will remind you, we have a one-million-dollar request to the town for our capital funding that we're still waiting to hear from. I've been answering questions to the asset management committee consistently for the last several weeks. But if this plan of consolidated schools or whatever doesn't happen, the next plan is figuring out what we're going to do for our schools, because we can't wait forever. We can't be talking about this for ten more years before we put more money into the schools.
Is the town developing a capital improvement program, consolidating their needs and the schools' needs?
No, that, that I can tell you is not happening.
Because the million dollars is just a number, but it's not like, okay, it's going to address our top three priorities or something like that.
Well, but that would, that would then come back to you in the form of the recommendation that Dr. Ojai puts forward for you to consider for funding.
See, that's not, a capital, a capital improvement plan should identify exactly what's going to be done.
Well, our plan really...
Our plan prioritizes what we'd like to do first.
But our plan prioritizes.
So, what, what does a million dollars get us?
Uh, the million dollars will get you half of the, it'll get you half a million dollars, which is the estimate for the rest of the upgrades to the heating ventilation system. They were costed out at a million seven. We spent about a million two. So, there's a phase two, you know, phase three, I guess we did the attic fans and then another phase. And we had, we, there are some ventilation issues at the D-building. There are some, I mean, you could name a million different things that need to be done that are coming up due, that are past due, to be real honest with you.
And, you know, and we, we have a capital plan, and it identifies, I don't know, twenty-something projects.
I know, but what is...
At the tune of twenty million dollars. And it's in priority order that, that you have agreed to. And once we get, if we know we have some money to address some of these things, then it will be the school committee's job to say, "Okay, we're prioritizing these things with our million dollars this year." Or, or we're going to save some of it so we can do a million five next year to get this other piece. You know, even though, you know, often, a boiler is a lot less attractive than a new track or, or, or a football field.
Except in January.
Yeah, until you kids are freezing at the elementary school. You know, it needs to be, right.
There are no boilers this year. It's been one.
So, you know, I mean, these things can change year to year. We, we may have, you know, the roof for an elementary school set up for two thousand and twenty-one, but if the thing starts leaking like a sieve tomorrow, I can guarantee you, that's going to move to the top of the list, like it did at Quitnesset a couple of years ago. So, but, you know, to not budget for, with, I mean, you're an engineer, you know this. I mean, to not budget with the idea that buildings are getting older and you're going to need to address their concerns, I mean, it's ludicrous. But that's what we're doing.
I want to rewind just a tiny bit.
I'm not getting too frustrated tonight, am I?
And I don't want to rehash them, but I just want to make a new point. Mr. Judd, you made a very important point, which is that the big numbers only come with a long-term vision of looking at realigning. Because, and it needs to be done every, you know, I don't know how many years, every ten, every fifteen years, but there is a point where we need to sit down and look at enrollment trends, which we're going to have our new study, and we need to look at population and where things are in the town, plug that into where our buildings are, and, and make decisions. And they are often very difficult decisions, because consolidation of schools by definition means you are closing something. And the fastest way to pack this room is to suggest to a group of parents that their kid's school might be moving somewhere else or closing. Warwick has been dealing with this issue for years, and frankly, has been putting it off for years, and they are now in an extraordinarily difficult position because they haven't made, they've been unable due to the public's opposition to make decisions that really need to be made in their district. But one of the problems that we may run into, particularly in the middle school area, and while this is certainly not a, a definite plan, one of the options that's been talked about is to utilize space, the high school campus for a sort of a unified middle-high school, and have some savings with transportation issues and things like that. When I want to caution the asset, not the, the new, what do they call it?
Town.
The, the town's.
Government.
Government center and Asset Management Commission. Both of those committees that, the Asset Management Commission has made the point many times that in the relocation of the town hall to the school administration building and the money that they are intending on putting into that building to relocate the town hall, that that's being looked at as an investment in a structure that can be used, as I've heard, a community center or other things. But that real estate area is the area that would work for this plan. And if it's going to be used, whether it is, what I'm afraid of is that the town hall moves into that building and never frankly moves out again, or whether it's used for something else simply because they suddenly have this building that they spent a million dollars on and they don't want to throw it away, they need to think about that before they spend the million dollars, because I don't necessarily think that putting money into a building that is on the high school campus makes a lot of sense in the long-term since that's an area that we may need to look for, for another structure.
I do think that's a long-term plan, however.
Oh, I don't think it's the plan, but...
But it doesn't mean it won't happen, yeah.
I, I am very concerned that sometimes the plan and what actually happens aren't always the same thing, because the reality is that if and when the town hall relocates into that building, the laws of inertia say that an object at rest tends to stay at rest. And in order to move it out of that building is going to require someone to make a decision and spend a lot of money. And those decisions don't always happen when it's just easier to just not do anything. So, that's my concern.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sheila?
So, I have two questions. One on, well, let me go. So, the elementary schools, I know that you cannot just take the numbers and add them up. And so, the study that's being right down, done right now, will they be looking at our elementary schools, the enrollment at each school, the capacity of each school, and making recommendations about that?
And they're going to be working heavily with the town, because right now, the way NESDAQ does it, you know, they'll tell you that your first couple of years of projections are a lot more solid than your future years. But what they do now is they're only looking at HUD applications and whatnot. But in this study that we have commissioned, they're going to be working with the town and looking at what Mrs. Avanzano brought up about the new developments, the developments in the pipeline, the timing of those developments in the pipeline, and be able to give us a lot more solid projection on enrollment for down the line. And that will be for all of our schools, based on, on NESDAQ criteria and how they do that. So, that's all of the schools they'll do, all levels.
And I think it's important to remind ourselves that ten years ago, there were six elementary, uh, seven elementary schools in North Kingsdale, and now there are five. So, that work has already been happening. It's not new. And, you know, talking about packing those school committee meetings, I'm sure Mrs. Avanzano can tell you, there were quite a lot of faces staring her down when those decisions were made. You know, so, very, you know, contentious, and, and, you know, thankfully, those decisions have been made. But, so, but we're at a point right now that it, it just worked out that even a year before we went to full day K, I didn't have the room to do it without adding, say, a trailer at Forest Park, for instance, to, to get an extra classroom to make that work at Forest Park. As it turned out, there was a little bit of a downturn in enrollment in Hamilton, so we moved the special ed program from Forest Park to Hamilton. That opened up the classroom at Forest Park to make the full day K classroom that we needed there. So, every school right now is full. You know, that is good. I mean, when you look at the Warwick issue, they're looking at schools that are half-full, you know, old floors that don't have a kid on them. And, you know, I mean, that's ridiculous. But our schools are full. The question is, we shouldn't be planning for next year. I mean, we should, but we should be planning for ten years from now, and the enrollment trends across the state of Rhode Island are saying, you're proud, you know, some of them are, are telling us, "We could be looking at five hundred to a thousand students less than we have now at that point." We need to be sure of that number before we start making long-term plans, but we need to plan for it. Mr. Jones always points out, I mean, if I come to you tomorrow and say, "I need two-hundred-thousand dollars worth, worth of construction work at Wickford Middle School," do we want to put two-hundred-thousand dollars into Wickford Middle School? It would be one of the first things we would think about, you know, either revitalizing or doing without in the long-term, because it's so old, and every time you touch it is all these residual costs around what you do. So, and it's, it's about as inefficient as you can come. It's a gorgeous building, you know, it has a lot of romance to it, I guess. My kids went there and they loved it, but, you know, it's not ideal as a school building anymore. It was, was about a hundred years ago, but it isn't now. So, you know, we need to be thinking in terms of, you know, what are we going to be doing in September? in September, but we also need to be thinking about where are we gonna be ten years from now and are we gonna be prepared for it?
This, I won't, this'll be quick. In terms of closing schools, it's, it's all in how you do it. Wickford Elementary School got closed basically in a crazy sequence of events where people weren't expect, actually, Fishing Cove got closed first and nobody expected it, they didn't even know it was coming, it wasn't even advertised, nothing. They just shut the school down and everybody just completely freaked out, there are four or five hundred people at these meetings. Then they reversed the decision and opened it again, then they closed Wickford L, then they got sued over closing Wickford L, then the judge said it was a violation of the law the way they did it and, big nightmare. So, when it came time to close Davisville Elementary School, Larry Cerisi was the chair of the school committee and he, he and all of us agreed, we're gonna do this right and we're gonna make sure the public knows all about it and that they're part of the process. And we had a, you know, several public meetings over a series, I think it was, we took like a year to close the school and we had all these different events and, and, you know, a lot of information on it for the, and we, and as much as people were sad to see their neighborhood school closed as a school, we didn't really have any pushback, because people understood the situation. So, I think we have to be really careful how we do these things and how we notice these things and be very transparent, that's a big thing, big part of it, people accepting it. The other thing is, just real quick about this, about the town government center, I'm concerned about this situation with the town government center, because it's seen as being a joint school committee, town council thing. Frankly, this committee has never agreed, the school committee is a sovereign committee, we make our decisions. We don't put our decisions off on some subcommittee or, I don't even know who's on that subcommittee, at least at this point, I don't know.
I know. You, you selected me to be on that.
Yeah, well, good. Well, I remember you saying you weren't for town government center at the time, we've talked about it, the three of us, we're not, we're not, and that's.
And they can't do anything without bringing their recommendation back to us.
And we did talk about that. I just wanted to put that out there once again, because I think the, the committee needs to, the school committee needs to make sure that we continue to be in charge of that from our perspective, that we continue to have active input into that and it's not just a, a train that's going down the tracks with the town council driving it and, and we just end up as a part of the project without even necessarily agreeing to that.
Agreed, and, and I have been clear with the people that I've spoken to about it, mostly Phil Bergeron and a couple of other people on the committee, that this needs to be a truly shared vision, the school committee's goal and responsibility is to ensure that the operation, the administrative operation of the school department is maintained and that everything, you know, you're really gonna have to come back to the school committee, town, you know, and the town side as well.
It's gonna be tough to say no at that point, though, I know the way these things go, I mean, this committee is, you know.
Yeah, but you know what, I think it's tough to say no, that you won't look into it either.
Oh, yeah, you gotta look into it.
We don't, you know, we don't know what the looking into is gonna produce with the ideas of the people on the committee or whatnot.
I'm glad, Sheila, that you're on that committee.
Are one of you going? We're both there tomorrow night, yeah, I'll be right here in the, in this meeting.
Great, okay.
We're on the committee.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we have good representation on there, that's good.
Yes, my other issue is about the buses. So, in order to change, right now, the buses each do four morning routes and four afternoon routes?
Yes.
So, in order to change the start times and make the high school later and the elementary earlier, how, do you see the buses doing less routes and are they same cost per bus or less, or how does that work?
We, we made a pretty lengthy presentation about this not too long ago, but part, part of the solution, and this is the, you know, three to four-hundred-thousand-dollar solution that can get us to where we want, and there aren't really any like, you know, fifty-thousand-dollar solutions, this, that's gonna, the, the, what's driving this, excuse the pun, is largely the elementary school piece. And we have the latest elementary start time for three of our schools and we have the earliest high school start time. And that's because we've cut back on so many buses over the years to the point that each bus needs all of that time to go from the high school, to do a middle school run, to do a first elementary run, do a second elementary run. If we want to get the high school away from seven fifteen and more, and I'm not saying at eight o'clock, but more toward eight o'clock, that would put us kind of in the zone where more, most of the high schools in the state are. You, you recall Barrington just made a motion to go to eight thirty and East Greenwich beyond eight o'clock, but to getting us closer to eight o'clock, which is what, you know, the survey suggests is where people wanna go. And to bring the elementaries to eight forty-five, or in, you know, give or take five or ten minutes, right now, they're around nine twenty-five as a start time?
Three late ones.
Yep. We, we would be looking at getting to a point where we would have three runs instead of four. And part of that solution would also include Wickford Middle School students traveling with high school students, because the schools are so close that we could make that work and possibly even some Davisville Middle School students traveling with high school students, if that would kind of work out in terms, there, there are some neighborhoods that come into the zone of the high school where those kids go to Davisville, you know, all just go to Wickford. So, but it would include some of that. And, you know, other communities have middle school traveling with high school, but, but even just doing that, making those kinds of, of changes, we would probably need in the neighborhood of around six buses or so, and we would be looking at a bill of somewhere between three and four-hundred-thousand dollars. And I'm already proposing a budget that is one-hundred-thousand dollars shy of four percent. So, that's, that's the problem that I'm facing. And, you know, again, what, what kind of school system do we want in our community? You know, we've heard that this makes sense for kids, it's healthy, it's gonna help them with their achievement. We've gotten a survey where the community clearly has told us they'd like us to move the high school a little bit later and the elementaries, those late elementaries, more toward eight forty-five. So, we know what the community wants and so, you know, I, I feel we have a responsibility to do our best to address that. And we're starting with no changes, three-point-seven-three percent.
No, my question is, you answered part of it, that, okay, so now they're gonna, you could do it with three runs with some consolidation of, or overlap of students.
Yes.
Middle school and high school. But, right now, what we're paying for is a bus that's doing four morning runs and four afternoon runs. Do we, is it the same cost for the bus to, to do three runs, just because you're, you're basically owning the bus for the day? Because it really hasn't anything that they can do before or between.
And there, it, it's, what you're basically asking is where the inefficiencies are in that system, because we're going to a different tier system. So, if you want all the elementaries to start at the same time, which is basically what the proposal was, they would start at the same time and you're making some other changes, you probably will have some inefficiencies. It will not be as tight a ship as what you have now, that every second and then, you know, buses are taken over here and over here, but in the, in the, the overall scheme of it, you have to add the buses to get to that, because you're building from your lowest tier up. So, you need to have the number of buses that you need to accommodate the elementary school routes all at the same time and that's the X number of buses. As you move through your system, in this scenario, you will have inefficient, some inefficiencies, because now you don't need as many buses as you're going up. You will use them, you will use some of them, but when you build up, you're probably gonna see, maybe the middle school buses don't have as many kids on them, because we're taking more buses and spreading them out to more routes now. So, it, it does not, it does become a bit of a more inefficient operation, but it's just by the function of needing X number of buses to get all elementary school kids to school at nine AM.
And each bus run is faster, that's, that's the point, it's picking up fewer kids so it can get from one school drop-off to the next school drop-off more quickly.
For a bus, you know, say you had ten buses and then you're gonna go to twenty buses, are you still paying the same price per bus?
Yes, bus, bus driver monitor.
You're basically paying for the bus for the day.
You are.
Yeah.
Any more comments? Ever a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.